The August 27th, 2012 meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors, if you'd like, come to order. Please rise and join me in this committee of debate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, it gives me great pleasure to represent, to introduce Judge Chubbs Reilly, former representative of this district, who is going to administer the oath of office
All right, Dr. Seidberg, if you please, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and I will discharge the duties of my office with failure. Congratulations. Okay. This is the real one, like we do the wedding ceremonies.
Next one. Thank you, Judge Reilly. We appreciate you coming. The next item I have on the agenda is a request to address the board I have two tonight. The first one is Ms. Michelle Bartolome, speaking about busing at Willow Lane.
My name is Michelle Bartolome, and I live in the Brandywine One Development in McConge. My children attend Willow Lane. My daughter is in the fourth grade, and my son started kindergarten today. I'm here tonight because I took great exception to some of the comments made regarding the busing situation at the last meeting, particularly the comments made by Mr. Earnshaw and Mr. Ballard. I was not at the July 9th meeting where a number of parents spoke about the board's earlier vote to eliminate busing at Willow, but my husband was, and he spoke against your prior vote, pointing out that it was irresponsible to eliminate the busing without the safety issues resolved first. I did, however, attend the last board meeting two weeks ago, and I sat here frustrated with and quite frankly disgusted by the comments I heard from Mr. Ballard and Mr. Earnshaw about the safety arguments that had been made at the July 9th meeting. Mr. Earnshaw called those arguments disingenuous, and Mr. Ballard called them specious. You, this board, including Mr. Earnshaw and Mr. Ballard, voted at the June 25th meeting to not fund busing for Willow, and you passed that budget knowing full well that after three years there was still no safety plan in place, no school zone signs, no crossing guards, no idea how to have kids safely cross a dangerous intersection where there are no traffic lights or walk don't walk signs, only four-way stop signs that no one knows how to negotiate. Did you really expect that parents would have nothing to say about that? Of course, we're going to argue for the safety of our children. As parents, that is our job. And as a parent who has had a child die, I take the safety of my two women children very seriously. Yes, bad things happen sometimes to children that can't be prevented. I don't need to be told that. I live it. My husband and I have lived it every day. So when we heard our children would not be bused and that the safety issues had not been worked out, you bet we were going to speak out. To then hear that safety argument dismissed as insincere or without merit was and is infuriating. It is insulting to not just my husband and I, but to everyone who spoke concerned about the safety of their children and to your constituents in general. Mr. Earnshaw wondered aloud about where was the outrage from parents that Brandywine Two kids were going to have to walk this year, and I'd like to answer that. First of all, Brandywine Two kids do not have to cross any intersections, dangerous or otherwise, to get to school. So their situation is a bit different than the rest of the kids slated to become walkers. Second, now that parents have finally been given some information regarding the school zone signs being planned, crossing guards, and will have the opportunity to ask questions and have concerns addressed at an October information session that's scheduled to be held, people have calmed down. It's hardly a case of as long as it's not my kid. All we want is for this to be done properly, for the safety of our kids. And the proper way is not voting first, thinking second, acting annoyed when parents advocate for their children's safety, and then dismissing that advocacy as disingenuous or specious. When you do it that way, you not only lose votes from your constituents, you lose their respect.
Thank you, Ms. Bartolome. Next and final request to address the board is from Mr. Garrett Rhodes, speaking about
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Once again, I find myself in the unenviable position of having to represent the forgotten taxpayer to this Board of Directors. I must admit that this could be considered tiresome and boring by those who would continue to subvert transparency in the hope that district taxpayers would simply continue to throw the public sector line in blissful ignorance. But my Quaker grandmother taught me that those who do not speak out against the abuse of power are bound to its devices. Tonight, you will be voting for or against pay raises for our administrative staff. Given the fact that just two short months ago, this administration, the school board president and vice president of this school district, painted a grim and dire financial outlook for our future, which included no pay raises for our teachers, an impending pension crisis, and a stated $60,000 cut in busing to Willow Lane students in order to contain the supposedly necessary tax increase to only less than 2% for all East Penn homeowners. I must confess that I am confused. If our budgetary situation is as bad as has been represented by the administration, how can we possibly entertain the idea of offering raises to our administrative staff? I have had a chance to review the proposed raises, and I must say that modest raises for those earning less than $45,000 per year, which is the starting salary of any East Penn School District teacher, are probably warranted and overdue. This would amount to a cost of less than $10,000 to the taxpayers and our fragile budget. To suggest that the other $67,000 plus requested to line the pockets of school district bureaucrats is necessary is, in my opinion, totally irresponsible, given the financial figures broadcast by this administration just a few short weeks ago. An argument will be made that if we don't cough up the extra tax dollars to cover these raises, that employees will leave for greener masters. I would submit to you that you let them go. Our district does not lack for qualified individuals looking to serve the district. In closing, I would like to say that if we did not have the $60,000 necessary to secure the safety of our children attending Willow Lane Elementary School eight weeks ago, how do we now magically have the $77,000 needed for these unnecessary administrative raises? The public gets upset when our state and federal legislators vote raises for themselves. Why would we not get equally upset when our school district administrators do the same thing? If $163,000 a year for a superintendent is not enough to secure adequate administrative capability to our schools, why would $166,000 a year be any better? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. All of the requests to address the board that I have, we'll now move on to approval of minutes. I have a motion, please. If you move and second it, are there any conversions, additions to minutes? Ms. Donches?
Yes, I have a very hand. Let it mention that I had stated that the Brandywine Two would be crossing a street twice. But may interject that that was according to the map that was provided to us.
That your interpretation of the map that was provided had been crossing two streets?
It did. Apparently, it was incorrect at first, so I want to clarify or check your interpretation of the thing.
The text, please.
It's not that you got the tax dollars or anything else.
Okay. You will put that the document was... You were not even interpreting the document correctly. Are there any other corrections or additions to minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended by Ms. Donches, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes approved. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidberg.
Thank you, Sir Ballard. By all accounts, I think we had a very successful first day of school this year, our first pre-Labor Day in school. In traveling around the district, we noted very, very little problems. We had some minor transportation glitches. We'll certainly work to correct those. And Mr. Clancy and First Student had a list of things that they need to correct, but I would say that overall, it was much better than the service we received from First Student last year. I do want to say for a moment that there were a lot of people monitoring the situation at Willow Lane today, and I will say that Mr. Clancy was on site. I was on site, and I want to thank parents for their cooperation. I think those who walked today with the children found that they were greeted by staff who certainly displayed caring concern for their students, and I saw no visible problems whatsoever with people moving down either Willow or I did not visually see a pelican, but my understanding is that what smoothly as well. One minor bump. We had said that we would put some cones out in the back of the school. We had changed our traffic patterns. Those cones were out there this afternoon, and I think we're going to order some more to make sure that they're visible as well. I do want to thank Mr. Clancy, Dr. Mirabella, and Mr. Moyer. They had, from what I understand, a very interesting game of parents about the law of the law, and I think they responded to all the parent concerns, and I look forward to moving on the rest of our plans sometime this year. So I think it was all a very good day. As is our custom, after the third day, we will give you an enrollment update. We are watching a couple situations. We're most concerned right now, McConge fourth grade, McConge fourth and fifth grade. A couple more students may force us into looking at whether we want to add another staff member or Mr. Best. It's certainly a weird situation, Mrs. Campbell's monitoring it, and so we're paying close attention. I met with Mr. Best this morning, and he reminds me, that's why it's great to have experienced principals in your buildings, and do a great job. He reminded me that for his particular constituents, there are a lot of rental properties, a lot of kids that their families ain't rent for some reason in McConge, but well, let's just see what happens in the first month of the month of these little leases, so we'll see if that brings any more students. I too am anxious to see how we're doing. I know that we still have appointments. Even today, we have people still waiting to register, and I don't think that's necessarily... But I think we always wish that parents would come in and make an appointment earlier in the year, but it is what it is. So we'll keep monitoring, especially as the situation in McConge, everything else looks pretty good. No school class sizes. They can be a little higher than what we want, but again, we'll take a look at that. Last Thursday, Anne Flynn from the National School Boards Association came to visit in preparation for the National School Boards Association site visit in East Penn in April. For those who don't know Anne, she's a really interesting lady. She has lots of experience in her side, and I think doing this for the better part of 15 years, we really got a lot of key information, and I think it helps shape our thinking as to how we want to structure the days. I want to remind the board that that Sunday night will be a generalized reception. All that is paid for through registrations. That will be held in the Holiday Inn. Our visitors will be staying in the Holiday Inn. So they'll be a roll for someone from this quarter, and hopefully board members will attend to welcome our visitors. And then possibly during those days, we're going to have some many seven hours of lunches for a guest, and we hope that there certainly will be onboard presence on those two days as well, to go out and support the visit, because after all, it's the school boards visit a little. But I went on a trip last year, but when I went on the two-day visit to Willow last year, I did have an opportunity to interact with the board members from Ohio, so there are some board members in 2010. One of the things we're going to be working on in the near future is some of our policies regarding fundraising. As you know, we talked last year about doing some minor advertising on our website. We looked some of the policies, we made some minor changes. We're going to forward those to Attorney Fisher for him to look at, so you can expect the next month to have some policies that we're going to ask you to basically review and update. The one thing that we're going to have to do, we knew that coming in, part of the Monday night of the visit, we want to... Most school districts sponsor some type of get-together in the evening. As I said before, our goal is to have a wonderful evening at the Division Science Center. One of the things we have to work at, again, we have our policies, we're certainly going to have fundraising to support that, that event. We certainly don't want to take that out of the coffers of the district. Most districts that have these, we have a list of mentors, mostly Dell, people like that, they generally contribute to that kind of thing. You know, certainly do that as being super expensive, but nonetheless, the other thing that will be going out, working with local businesses, is to create visitor bags for folks that they get tubkens of nice snakes from. Again, we're very excited. We all know about registration until the last moment. Since we're the last, I think we're the third visit. Curiously enough, right after us, April was Vancouver. We are the smallest district this year. Miami-Dade, Arlington, Illinois, and then Vancouver, so you don't think Dallas, St. Louis are kind of the small side, but I think that we're generating a lot of interest in doing this program right now. So we'll be giving you more information. Our wishing hour is late September for us to put together our basic description of what we're going to be doing, so we look forward to creating that. Okay, one of the things we talked about last year, we heard from Paris, we do listen, creating a hard calendar, and I want to thank the Call Boys for our efforts. There it is, fully funded. A little bit smaller version than we had in the past, but I certainly want to thank the Call for our efforts in finding the advertisers to go back to a hard copy. So the kitchen refrigerators will be adorned with East Penn calendars. At the same time, also want to clarify, we are going to continue this year, I want to make this very, very, very certain, that we are going to be going even greener this year than we were last year with report cards. The only change is that we upgraded our software system to create a better PDF file. So one of the complaints from Paris last year was that when you went to download the actual report card, sometimes it didn't look like the old report card. The information was there, but when you downloaded it, it didn't look and have that feel. You know, the kind of report card you take and get it free. So we've worked with East School, and we now have purchased a PDF file maker that will allow people to print exactly what the old report cards looked like. We think that will go a long way. When we had a discussion a couple weeks ago about our PILL program instructional house, I want to really thank Dr. Torma, Mrs. Campbell. I'm pleased to tell you that our PILL application has been approved after what, two or three iterations? We now are going to get 70 hours? 70 hours? And so just want board members to understand this is going to be a savings for us in terms of, even for someone like me who's got to take 180 hours, I won't have to go to take an online class or go beyond the district. It's all part of our job, we better do our part. So everyone in the district that has to take PILL hours will be happy 70, apply next year for an additional 70 hours. So we really are optimistic we can get about 140 hours of everyone's 180 requirement for the next two weeks. So I certainly want to thank Dr. Torma, Mrs. Campbell for really diligently to get this approval, and we're really excited because this makes sense for us, us all here together, working on the same skill set. Just a last minute staff, and just a few positions are not filled. We are interviewing people even today, a couple long-term solo positions. We had some instructional assistants and some staff assistants who will design late in August, and we will fill those positions as rapidly as we can. And so again, I think we're in pretty good shape starting this year today. And finally, I just want to give special recognition to Scott Deidra. Scott did a marvelous job last year at Playhouse with his students, creating, working with students, giving them the opportunity to challenge themselves. And Scott received a wonderful award from Philadelphia College. He actually had four of our students write letters of recommendation from, from what I understand, from Philadelphia College the first time they had those kind of letters from students regarding Sun Ocean Garden. Now, the good news is Scott may be working with Philadelphia College and doing some kind of business design on another project with the students, and we'll certainly keep our ears be grounded. If we're successful, coming up with a plan, we'll come back and tell you. So I just wanted to pay recognition to Mr. Deidra. Thank you both. All right, Mr. Ballard, that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Dr. Seidberg on this report? On appearing, we'll move on to the personnel items. It's my understanding that Ms. Donches has requested that the section on Act 93 compensation be called out, so that will be 5.3 on the agenda, and the personnel items would include also the agenda other than that holdout. I have a motion, please, to that thing. Is there any discussion on the personnel items? On appearing, Ms. Burts will be in call or roll, please.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Paulakana.
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
Mr. Stoll.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
All right, item 5.3 will then be approval of Act 93 compensation non-bartering salaries that are strongly considered high. I have a motion to that place, please.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Donches.
I would like to make a motion or amend the motion if it was appropriate, that the approval of the Act 93 compensation non-bartering salaries only be awarded to those people making 45, or less than $45,000 a year.
All right, Ms. Donches has forwarded an amended motion. We were discussing the amended motion. Mr. Earnshaw.
Well, I'd certainly like to hear a rationale from Ms. Donches of why she supports this. It's interesting that throughout the recession where I worked, there have been raises and bonuses every year except one where there were no raises, and there have been bonuses every year throughout the recession. Those are primarily professional employees. I don't understand why these professional employees should be accepted from what's common practice in the industry in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Someone else hasn't spoken yet?
I think I will point out that for the record, this year, we only have partial freezes on the remainder of our other employees' contracts, the non-teacher contracts, and in the teacher's contract, we have only step increases and a 1% raise for the people on top of the scale on the events, some of that, but it's not total freeze this year.
Ms. Donches, if you wanted to have a second comment.
I wanted to note that in the bond financing that we had just gotten, that the trend is for capital income for the East Penn School District according to what's here, the census for 2010, that per capita income is $34,297, and that is even less than the people that are making for the 45, which is less than the lowest starting payment of the...
Ms. Fuller.
If I could finally comment on that, per capita is the amount of money spread over the entire population, which includes non-working children. So I don't think it is appropriate to believe that the average income is...
Mr. Earnshaw.
I'm curious if that per capita figure is earned income or personal income. Obviously, earned income only comes from wages, salaries, profits, sole proprietorships, whereas personal income comes from all sources, including investment income and royalties and other such forms of what they call non-earned. But as Ms. Fuller points out, not only does it include children, it also includes senior citizens. I have not yet seen an updated count of the proportion of senior citizens in the district, but as of the 2000 census, I believe it was close to 20% of the residents of the district were 65 years old or older. If that trend is held true or increased, then one would suspect that their incomes are severely curtailed, because many of them have retired. And I believe that Social Security and pensions, I know Social Security is not included in income figures for those complications, I know pensions are as well. So again, that's kind of a... I once saw an infographic that was done in the 60s. It said, "If you want to make $20,000 a year," and that was when $20,000 a year was a big deal in 1960, it said, "Have 12 children," because the per capita income rate was $900 or whatever it was. They said, "All you have to do is have 12 children to make $20,000 a year." So again, it would be interesting to me to see what the statistic is of working families, what the per household income is, and what the per working age adult income is as well. I need those to be much more relevant numbers to base any kind of policy effect.
All right, I would like to point out that, a couple of things. One, we have had a couple of demographic and income studies done in this district for Act 51, I think about seven years ago, and the Act 1 referendum that was done three years ago, I don't recall me on those numbers, but it's several years ago. But at that time, the median income in the East Penn School District was $75,000. So I find that number being used somewhat incredulously in terms of what it's supposed to represent. I doubt that it was put into the bond report for the purposes of that it's now being used. I would also point out, as painful as this may be to a number of people, that salaries in the marketplace are not determined by what the average income is in any given period. If you need the skills and education levels that are required for a certain job, you're competing against every other area in the country from one standpoint or another, and certainly locally, with everybody else who needs those job skills and sets of education for their particular business needs. And salaries are not set by average income levels, they are set by what the job requirements are. And if you go on a place like Salary.com or one of the other websites that price And if you go on a place like Salary.com or one of the other websites that tries to aggregate some of this information, you can find out interesting facts about salaries that you may not be aware of. I think I alluded to this before, you can find out that the salaries of some of the warehouse managers on Route 78, the upper country township, are as high or higher than what our superintendent is currently making. And I seriously doubt that any of those individuals require a PhD or any state certifications that our superintendent does. And so, it's not only determined by the requirements of the job, but it's also determined by the scarcity and necessity to find these people on the marketplace. So, using average income figures and playing on the sympathies of people from that standpoint is very disingenuous when it comes to also then trying to support pre-market philosophers who say that the marketplace sets the price of any individual's labor and not averages. I draw on to the statement that Mark Twain made talking about averages where he said that if on one hand you have your hand in a bucket of ice water and on the other hand you have your bucket full of boiling water, on the average, you're comfortable. And so, averages can be used for many things and I think they should be limited to statistical analysis of things and not try to use them to make some kind of definitive statement about what people should or should not be making for a salary. I think the administrative employees of this district have shown time and time again they're dedicated to the district. I think they have shown admirable restraint in their dealings with the district and their demands, I wouldn't even call them demands, their requests for consideration. You have to pay a fair wage to the people that you have in your employ or you'll be known as an unfair employer and you'll be known to lose people. And let me tell you that from the trials and tribulations we had the last time when we went out on a superintendent search, there aren't that many people going into administration anymore. The pool is drying up because why should they put up with the hassle of dealing with these issues, including public excoriation and other things, when they can get a job either in teaching or in some other field with their degrees and not have to put up with any of this? I said, "I find it less than candid for people to come out and try to establish public employee salary on some basis other than an evaluation like you do anywhere else in business." There are companies like the Hay Company who does hay ranges and other things like that for various positions and they establish what the work entails and what the educational requirements entail and what the cost is of trying to get somebody else in there and train them to do this job and various other things. So, they come out with some kind of objective consideration. But simply trying to limit public employee salaries because they are employed, quote, "by the public" is something I find to be tremendously offensive. If you have an argument about one of our employees or a group of our employees or something like that, salary because you have a comparison with some other job that's reasonably comparable or has some kind of bearing on the educational and functional facilities of the employees, we can talk about that. That's a very valid argument. Simply saying that public employees doing comparable work should have lower salaries because they're members of a group employed by the public is disingenuous of the best and is blatantly trying to establish political goals rather than economic goals or rational business goals. This is a business. We have to employ employees. We have to pay them a reasonable salary for the job they're doing. And telling people, "Quit or leave if you don't like our salaries because we're a public entity and we're not going to pay what you're worth," is extremely taxing to use upon, upon the principles of fairness, level playing field, and that the market determines the salary that people pay. So, if you're going to offer arguments, let's hear something about the job requirements, the education requirements, the specific duties, the things that people are supposed to do for their pay, and then let's have that argument if you want to argue for something less. But if you're not prepared to do that, don't throw out spacious statistics about what median incomes are and other things like that because, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, it has no rational bearing on the whole argument.
All right, who's next? Mr. Bogner.
I would like to add that the average wage increase is significantly less than the cost of living in the last year, or the inflation in last year. And that's somewhat beside the point. As Mr. Ballard said, if someone's getting paid too much, that should be addressed on the merits of their pay. I don't believe that the salary increases are on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Bogner. Any other comments? Ms. Donches.
I do think that the wages being paid are fair and competitive. And I wish I had had time between last meeting and this meeting to look at our analysis of all the districts that we've had out and so forth. When someone submits a position at a certain salary, that would be something to them. If, as a board, we are to look at all sides from everybody's point of view, from the taxpayer point of view, we are to be sure that we are cutting costs and maintaining costs. And since these are already reasonable salaries being paid, and if we are so strapped with the budget and so forth, and not only does this affect the raise or increases in the budget, but it will affect salaries, but of course it will also affect pensions in the future. I guess too, I would like to ask, is the first one through, what is the criteria? Because obviously, it wasn't all across the board, everybody got the same. That wasn't just like a cost of living increase. There must have been some thought going into like, why did someone get more than somebody else as much as 7.9% and where from 1.4, maybe lower. It's a review, it's a criteria. I know in business, you have to justify an increase. And people might make the same amount of money for years and years, not just get an increase to get an increase, you have to justify that. And I just, I would love to have had, stand like, a description of, was it extra schooling? Was it something over the top and over above the normal day that I've done? It would have been nice to perhaps be provided with a comparison to other school districts instead of having to do that research on our own. And I think just, I just go strongly that these are already competitive salaries, nice salaries. This is according, you know, to the superintendent's delivery, dire times. And I think that is enough justification for compensating. I'm willing to, 45,000, like I said, and below, I'm willing to give them a little bump. But above that, I think that it's not necessary to give.
Well, Ms. Donches, first of all, I'll point out this district has, has not, in the 16 years that I've been on the board, espoused a program of across-the-board raises. We have instituted merit raises deliberately to allow for variation in the raises that are given to our employees based on the evaluation of superintendent who is the person who evaluates the employee. So, there's a reason why there's no across-the-board raises. There are, it's some school districts for raise groups because we have seriously espoused the idea of merit raises with our administrators and we maintain that for 15 or 16 years that I know of as a policy for this district. It's interesting for you to say that you're unable to do the analysis of the other districts, but you know that the salaries are competitive. That seems to be a, be a non-sector. I can only see how...
Well, I have a little aura about this. I have a little different air and see that often there are...
My order, Ms. Donches is not going to be... Yes, I know that. The situation is that we have a system by which the superintendent performs the evaluations and those evaluations are private records of the school district and the employee and are not subject to writing to no requests, are not subject to disclosure to the public or to the court. So, we don't get to see those reasons. That's why we can't have those reasons put out on some form for someone to criticize as to whether or not they believe this is right or that is not. We have a superintendent, we charge him with a certain job, and we evaluate him in that job. And if there's some reason to believe that superintendent is not doing the job that he's supposed to and including restricting salaries accurately and equitably as reasonable judgment would allow, then that's our responsibility as a board to evaluate the superintendent on that basis and make some kind of decision regarding that. So, it is not a matter of public discussion as to why somebody got 1.7% and why somebody got 7.9%. It is just not legal to do that. Anyone else? Ms. Donches.
So, why isn't that we, we have to evaluate the superintendent? Doesn't it make sense to evaluate the superintendent before we grant to him?
There are times in the contract when that occurs and that will be occurring for the next year sometime this fall. I believe the vice president of the board has the responsibility to put that treaty together and make that evaluation situation. So, that will be occurring for the next time. But this particular one involves a new contract which was agreed to by the board and that contract specified the raise this year. So, then in effect, that evaluation has been made by the board. Anyone else? Mr. Pollock?
I was surprised, I was expecting this question issue at all times, I'm completely drawn on this right now. So, I think I'm at a stake here, I'm not sure where to take the discussions on that and what is getting more and fewer of these issues. I'm really not. That's why I'm at a stake here.
Don't say I can say, Mr. Pollock, I'm not sure that that is necessarily a reason for abstaining. All right.
Question, do you have to file an ethics report for the reason of your extension?
It's not because of a possible... Not because of a possible... Remember, you can abstain if you choose to. The only time you need the form is when there's potential that could come out that there's some conflict. You should be filing that if anything, that there's a reason for the extension. All right. Ms. Donches.
I'll just say one final thing. There were numerous numbers of people, I haven't seen the article in the New York Press about Dr. Seidberger's salary, that they couldn't believe how high it was. And I was happy to tell them that we had been in the contract at that same salary. And they still thought that was high. That to even have a higher salary, I think, would be very simple to have years.
Mr. Bogner.
I'd like to point out, my company has filed some documents, so I got to see, I see my company's salary significantly more than this. It doesn't have the education of Dr. Seidberger and he only has to deal with the private board of the company. So, I question the rationale for saying that this salary is... I'm certain some people who think less than that feel that's a huge number. But saying, I heard someone say that this is a high salary, doesn't provide any rationale on any basis comparison with the responsibilities of education and the duties. And so, I find it hard to believe that if you're judging salary on merit, how you could use that as a basis to say that this is a low reason for that.
Mr. Stoltz.
I just want to be on record as saying that I will support the motion as amended by Ms. Donches, which is why I've been fairly silent here before. I will have much to say if, as I expect, word goes against this. So, don't take my silence as not having anything to say on this idea as a whole. But I think it's perfectly reasonable and fair to give to people who are making less than what normal starting salaries for an example, for a teacher's husband. I take issue with raising it for many of the other administrators and I have specific reasons for that, but I'll address that later.
I believe it's appropriately reversed now. We will have a debate on the motion as a whole. The amendment fails, yes. We can continue the debate, that's true.
And I, when I was running last year, I put my record of voting against any raises for Dr. Seidberger, probably personal, on my literature. It went out to over 6,000 households. I'm somebody that stands by what they say they will do when they run for office. I don't, like many of you, pledge to be a fiscal conservative and then turn around and raise taxes on a yearly basis. And I'm doing what I can to keep spending down to a minimum. Again, I have more that I'll say about that. But I feel that I have amended, similar to what Ms. Donches was saying from the people, that's what I promised I would do, that's what I have done in the past and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Fuller.
I would appreciate, Mr. Ballard, when you ask for the, to restate your vote.
We are voting on amended motion to restrict raises to those under $45,000 in salary on the current administrative salary schedule, non-bargaining unit salaries. Is that the gist of the motion, Ms. Donches?
$45,000.
$45,000. No other commentary to appear. We will take a vote on the amended motion. The amended motion fails, we go back to the original motion.
Ms. Fuller. Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
I'll say.
Mr. Bogner.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Five ways, two R's, one extension.
Okay, now we go on to the motion that is currently on the floor, which is to approve the non-administrative, the compensation of the non-bargaining unit salaries down on Civic 9. Mr. Stoltz.
First of all, I heard what Mr. Rose said when he was addressing the board, but what is the... What is the total amount of money being used for paying raises?
It's around seventy-four thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand dollars. Less than two percent below on everyone's salary for all those categories.
And where is this money located?
General fund.
So was it in the budget that you?
Yes, it was.
Did you really budget money for paying raises while you recommended cutting busing to Little Lane?
I include salary increases for every employee in this district. That's correct. Some of those are contractual nature, as you know.
That brings another interesting question. Why do you need our approval for these pay increases if you didn't need our approval to restore the sixty thousand dollars for our busing, as this money was there and they already in the budget?
State law requires a vote on any salary increase for a school district employee.
And since we are voting on pay increases for Dr. Seidberg, I'm going to ask you again, as I asked you the last time, where did you get the authority, and I don't want Mr. Ballard against our party, where did you get the authority to restore busing and overturn the decision made by the majority of the board? I would sound agree with that decision in the budget.
At superintendent schools, I believe I'm responsible for transportation costs. Every time we get new student, special education students, I do not come back to the board and ask permission to provide transportation. If we had in excess of twenty-five, for instance, this year, give an example, we have no idea how many students we had going through the arts academy. We have about twenty youngsters from East Penn. That necessitated two bus runs. We didn't come back to the board and ask permission. We budget a certain category, as you know, Mr. Stoltz, we're locked into those categories until the end of October, and then we can make transfers. So based on that situation, we provide transportation for those students in Little Lane.
Okay. I just would like to point out for the record that you seem to be of the opinion, when we were voting on the budget at the June twenty-fifth meeting, if this is the will of the board to go through with this, we will create a safety plan. I looked at the video of the meeting earlier today. And however, if you take the ABG grant and think about restoring Little Lane transportation, which is sixty thousand dollars, again, you seem to indicate at that time that you needed the board's approval. The impact would be about, this is your words, the impact would be about two dollars and eight cents for every taxpayer who needs them to provide transportation for about three hundred and twenty-five students in Little Lane who live within a one point five mile area that we have to transport kids.
Yeah, that sounds like two dollars and eight cents for students.
Two dollars. You're welcome to go watch the video. That's worth a look. At the time, it sounded like you needed our approval. It's now your position that you do not need to restore.
Mr. Stoltz, I'll point out, it's also the opinion of the district solicitors. So trying to make it a Dr. Seidberg issue is burning the issues of the law.
Fair enough. Another question I have is, this is about seventy-four thousand dollars, which sounds like it's very close to being, that it could be used for the children, to hire a new teacher to help set up the class size increases and around metrics, have them in good conscience, recommend pay increase for administrators when we're looking at rising class sizes for children.
Mr. Stoltz, we've had this for a long time now, okay? I would appreciate, I would appreciate the politicking of that. Let's just talk turkey here, okay? You know darn well these administrators in this district took away these last year. No one had to approach them. No one's worked harder in this district than our administrative staff, and you know that. You also know that every employee in this district is getting the salary increase. We have got to be fair to the people that work on behalf of our schools. Now, we also, last board meeting, if you remember correctly, informed you that we were going to put in an additional teacher in Little Lane. We did that. So I don't think that we're jeopardizing any student in this district. My record speaks for itself. Last year, we put in Mississippi County students, how many teachers do special ed, two special ed teachers. I would never jeopardize special ed students, or if I thought the classroom levels were so high that we wouldn't put a teacher in there. In fact, earlier tonight, I talked about maybe the necessity for looking at additional teacher from a country. My position as the superintendent has always been, and I don't think any board member on this board told me last year to have a wage, to have the total freeze in the budget. If somehow I think that we're getting in trouble in the budget, I will simply freeze like we did last year. And by the way, that freeze generated about a million dollars last year. I've been in this business long enough to know what my priorities are. So thank you very much. I appreciate your concern.
I had no problem voting for you for a new term, because I do think that you have done a fine job.
Thank you.
But when I voted for it, it was at one hundred and sixty-three thousand, your old salary. I had no problem renewing your salary at that break. That was two weeks ago. My issue is with increasing salary two weeks later. And I noticed that this board seems to have adopted a tactic, or at least some leadership have seemed to have adopted the tactic of Harrisburg and Washington, D.C., of hiding a politically unpopular measure in laundry list that we usually vote on every time with the personnel items. If it were not for Ms. Donches asking this to be separated out, I doubt there would have been this debate before the public. And I think that that was probably the idea behind it. I don't think that, I didn't see, for example, in the morning call or East Penn Press, the same, the same sort of thing that I saw two weeks earlier with the announcement that Dr. Seidberg was on the verge of getting another term. I did not see in Hatch or Morning Call, et cetera, that we were going to be voting on a pay increase two weeks later, and I think that was intentional. I don't believe that the board wants the public to get on this thing. As Ms. McLeve's columnist said earlier, I think that it showed a lack of respect, and it's real, many people on this board view the public and the taxpayers addressing them as an annoyance. So with that, in order to give the public more time to digest this information and perhaps give an opinion on it, I move to table.
Motion to table is not debatable. A two-thirds majority is required to table the motion. This is not simple majority. Simple majority, sorry. Simple majority is required to table the motion. A motion of vote and aye will table the motion. Nay will leave it on the table, on the discussion. Ms. Burris will be called. Roll, please.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollicano.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Five nays, three ayes.
Motion is full for discussion. Mr. Mershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Well, it's an interesting set of discussions. First of all, the personnel salary increases have always been in the personnel section in the, well, this is my level here on the board. So eleven years on the board, it has always been there. It has never been a separate item. So to say we're trying to hide something is just rather silly. It's the way we've always done it. Second of all, the board meeting agenda, including the addendum with the list of salaries, was posted on the twenty-fourth of August at ten twenty-six a.m. So we have been not trying to hide anything. It's been there in full view of the public for anyone to look at. Second of all, we have had many discussions in our executive session, which is perfectly acceptable to discuss personnel matters, including negotiation matters. We have discussed the potential of awarding raises to our Act Ninety-three group on at least two and possibly three executive sessions, perfectly allowed by law, perfectly legitimate. I believe, Mr. Stoltz, that you were at all of those. You may have missed one. You have not raised big issues in executive session that you think this is outrageous. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. So you've brought a lot of different issues together and made some interesting accusations about the motivations behind this board. To my knowledge, I don't know of anyone on this board who has ever expressed interest in seeking higher political office, except you. There may be someone who harbors that desire, I don't know. No one has publicly expressed interest. So to accuse the board of politicking in Harrisburg style is, have an interesting claim to make, which we've been doing a lot of politicking this evening over this issue. I think that the raises that we have been asked to approve are fair and reasonable in light of the bargaining unit salaries that we are giving increases in their wages. I think this discussion has gone beyond counterproductive, and I call it a question. A good debate.
Your second to that.
Second.
Now we need two-thirds vote to end debate. Yes, those present. It's still two-thirds. Ms. Burris will be called. Roll, please. Affirmative. Aye will end debate.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
No.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano.
No.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Four and four, four ayes.
Motion fails for two-thirds majority. We'll continue debate. Anyone else want to say anything before I say something? Ms. Donches.
I would like to say that because of conversations and executive attachment, I was surprised to see this motion.
I'd just like to say, perhaps to avoid this kind of discussion in the future, it would be wise to seek some salary, we could get a salary study performed to get a better guidance on what are appropriate salaries for various levels of employment. I think there's some data on that. I haven't seen any data presented that these are unreasonable salaries, but I think that might be wise to look at in the future.
Mr. Barker, anyone else? I would like to make a couple of comments. First, I find it to be offensive for somebody to infer or imply a motive when that person has zero, and I say zero, facts behind it. Motive is something that you have to find out from the individual themselves or through a series of confirming pieces of information that would state definitively a motive. So saying some kind of motive is involved is what is known in debate class, which of course I last took in nineteen sixty-four. It's called an ad hominem attack, that is attacking the man rather than the issue. If you have some kind of issue, debate the facts. Don't attack the people who are involved with the issue. So that's all I'm going to say about that particular situation. But I will point out again that there are no facts involved in the discussion of what the salary should be from the side that is requested, that may not give ours administrative salary, non-bargaining unit employees a raise. No facts that are pertinent to the actual salaries involved. And to answer Mr. Barker's request, that may be nice, but let me tell you that based on my experience, no amount of logical information will affect the propositions that are being put forth today. In fact, imagine what would happen in this debate if the actual result of such a study were to say that we were underbating our employees. That would be something that would be very difficult to deal with on all fronts. So the results of such things are very, very dangerous to engage upon, and especially when the results would have to be made public. So it would work both ways. So I would say that that's not a very good idea, and, you know, we have people involved in our human resources area, we have our superintendent, we're daily dealing with the trials and tribulations and the numbers of interviews they have to do to gauge what the current salary market is. The fact that we have had a number of people turn us down after they had been selected as one of our top candidates. There are some people who aren't even given interviews because we can't match their salaries from other districts. I find it difficult to understand why the concept of we hired the superintendent, we either like the job that he's doing in whatever phase of the job he's doing, or we don't. We evaluate the superintendent. The board does not get into the minutia of determining the salaries of individual employees. We set parameters. We gave the superintendent parameters. He is operated within those parameters. And now some are trying to, undercover of not having to show that they didn't object to those parameters or voice any particular counter parameters to be given to the superintendent, are now trying to, in public, make a display of disassociating themselves from those discussions. I find that to be contemptible. You either put your line out consistently, or you don't. And if you have one statement in one meeting, and another statement in another meeting, depending on whether or not the meeting is public, that is contemptible. So let's put it this way. Vote the way you're going to vote. You can state any reason you want to. That's what the public forum is for. But don't try to ascribe motives to other people when it could be easily said that your motives are suspect. All right, third round. We should speak. Ms. Donches.
I did this in executive session. Can I say that?
It's in executive session, board, which you generally, you keep them in executive sessions. I don't, I would recommend that you don't vote that subject at fairness to you.
I like to stop this idea of having salaries. If indeed it shows that our administration or our employees made, then that's a step we take, and it's something that we have to deal with, because it is true that we need to be competitive. So we should know what those salaries are, what the duties and what the jobs are that people go to do in order to compare them. I would support that. I think it's the only way that we're going to get a level one, if we're going to get a level two. And then if we finally go the other way, then we have to do that.
Any other comments? Ms. Burris will be called. Roll, please. We are voting on the approval of the Act Ninety-nine compensation non-bargaining unit salaries exhibit nine.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Nay.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano.
Since I have stated before, I think I have to do it again here.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Nay.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, one abstention. Five ayes, two nays, one abstention.
All right. Move on to item six legislative. Situation is this, we're hearing rumors that the legislature has suddenly got an idea that they're going to take on a couple of school issues before they recess for the November elections. If so, it's going to be another one of these hurry, behind the doors, nobody knows anything till the last minute, you take a quick vote, you're gone, no debate kind of situations again. So you need to talk to your representatives, whatever your viewpoint is, you've got to let them know now because it could occur in just a snap of a finger if somebody gets the right coalition together. And those two issues are, that I know of, are charter school authorization. And it is rumored that they will also discuss charter and cyber school funding. Both of those issues are very important to public education. They need to weigh in on. My personal opinion is, is that we need more oversight on charter school funding and especially cyber charter school funding. And we need a level playing field, we need all the schools that get public funding that take the same public tests, that's my position on public school financing. And as far as authorizations, this is to try to get around the fact that some school boards have had the disparity to turn down charter school educations, some of which badly needed turning down, in my opinion, because of the financial impropriety of the plans that were put forward and other basic problems. But we have two more charter schools opening up already that have been approved in Lehigh Valley, one of which was, is being founded by one of the founders of Seventh Generation, should be not Seventh Generation, the Performing, Lehigh School for the Performing Arts, Dr. Thomas Lovin, who's got another school forming up in the Lehigh Valley area. And there's now one for the Medical Arts forming up, I believe in Caddasakwa. So we're still approving charter schools, but now they want to try to even loosen it even more. And I think that's an issue that begs the question of what is the purpose of charter schools? They're supposed to provide innovative new techniques that could be absorbed into the public schools. I've yet to see very much innovation and I've yet to see very much absorption. So uniqueness is kind of an interesting word there too. So again, on those two issues, you need to get to your legislators and talk to them about the impact on public education, if you see them and what your opinions are. So we can expect a flurry of sudden possible legislation in those areas. Tax reform, they're basically still just forming the select committee that they have to study this. I listened to the entire first meeting of the committee. It's very interesting to see the cynicism that exists on that committee about as to whether or not the committee will actually be able to accomplish anything or not. They are discussing all of the proposals that are currently in the legislative chamber and they are discussing any possible other alternatives that might be out there. The main questions the committee so far is, there have been a number of independent legislative fiscal office studies of some of the proposals that say they don't come up with enough money to replace property taxes and that's got to be a very big concern. The number that's been crossed about right now is thirteen million dollars in different tax money to replace property taxes. And that's a very large number. It translates in, even with income tax and sales tax, either number or a combination of the two, it still translates into large numbers. One figure I heard that probably didn't make the mark is one percent increase in sales tax and a one percent increase in state income tax. I mean, that's like a fifty percent increase in the current rate of tax, perhaps we're close to. I mean, that's the kind of numbers they're talking about and those may not make up the thirteen billion. We're still trying to get some numbers out of the legislative fiscal office, independent fiscal office to determine that. So that's very unlikely to have anything happen until after the election and frankly, it's probably very likely not to happen until the next legislative session because of the inertia, even though the committee is supposed to report by November, nobody's going to do anything until the election's over with and things settle out there. So I suspect it'll be the New Year's legislative session before anything occurs. So keep your eyes on Harrisburg, we have a lot of legislative activity and not much of good. Any questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
I mentioned that the last meeting, I believe it was, that they're, they have scheduled four special session days after the election. I heard from one representative that fifteen, sixteen, twenty-two of those days, and it's just going to be used, so they say, for the party legislators to say goodbye and so forth. If that's the case, it sounds harmless enough, something to always keep an eye on. And I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of people in our leadership several days ago, getting their names, reached confidentiality with their names, but what they said was probably not. I could get a straight answer from both of them on what they were going to do with property tax reform, elimination, what have you. In fact, I even got contradicting reports from two of them, and they're supposed to be on the same team. The one consistent answer I did get is that they plan in the New Year to finally tackle the defined contribution versus defined potential. I got a definitely going to tackle that in the next session, whether or not they'll still be in power. So that's.
Any other comments or questions? Move off legislative to other educational entities. The Department of Lehigh, per me, you can move this forward.
Thank you. Last Monday night, we had a presentation about the special camps that were during the summer for the students, select students of CLI. During the summer, of course, these comments were for paying children to lose learning, especially so with special needs children. You can't just help foster the learning while also providing fun in a very engaged setting. And this was paid for largely through the CLI Foundation. I think I mentioned golf, where I visited, signed through June to help improve that. Additionally, we have a presentation about CLI getting into social media, twenty-first century technology, what these next business is doing, CLI is gaining speed. They understand that it's important for the public to get to understand the programs that they do and the work roles that they play in life with children. So they are empowering teachers to make videos, classes, get them approved and propose them online to help the public to learn and understand the purpose of that. My report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Any questions or comments from this floor? It's my understanding that we will have a report on Lehigh Career Technical Institute next meeting.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Mr. Rhodes. We can go ahead and do it now. I wasn't prepared to do this, but it's a big deal. I think the biggest thing we did at the meeting last week was we said goodbye to Jane Mann, who is the official, she's the recording secretary and the assistant. She is the person through which all the members of JOC communicate with LCPI administration. She is measurable, patient, kind, and I haven't said she had to go, but I hear that we have a very good place coming in. Basically, LCPI is ready to accept students for the New Year. They had new student orientation and they are prepared for the scheduling problems that they have now with some schools having already started and some schools that have not started. And what they want to concentrate on is all the teachers have been told, look, everybody need to welcome everybody equal in economy, play, that's not your fault. So there's equal welcome for everyone, everybody will take in stride, ability to stick and stand as usual and ready to go. If anybody, if any of us has anything, add, please do. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw.
There was one other, I thought I mentioned there, some corridor, I can't remember which compass point it is, that had a windowed ceiling, the roof was all skylights, and has been an energy drain for a number of years there. They said during the summertime, it's usually too hot just to walk through there, it's about the mid to high nineties in that corridor. They, it was single pane glass, it leaked during rainstorms and when the snow had melted, it was just not a great situation. So since that system was reaching the end of life, they replaced that roof, they replaced the side windows with double pane glass, and now the air conditioner actually shuts off during the day from time to time, even with the sun bearing down. So it's an example of the energy efficiency improvements that they've chosen to invest in the school. I think we heard they've saved over a million dollars now from electricity costs over as a five-year period, four-year period, something like that total, just through making some very wise investments in energy efficiency. So that's something that we've always been looking at here as ways to get more bang for our utility. Thank you.
And I believe we have engaged on many of those programs here at CLI School. We'll be looking for more of those. Are there any other comments on the report? All right, we'll move on to business operations. Does anyone have any objections to putting items one through four together? Ms. Donches.
I have a question about number one.
Well, the questions, you can still ask the questions even if you put them together for some reason, while you still want them separate. Putting them together doesn't prevent asking questions about any of them, or are you worried about one of them not passing if your question isn't answered?
Yes.
Number two, all right. So can I have a motion on one, three, and four together, please? Second. Any discussion on items one, three, and four? Ms. Donches.
I did have one question for what the first national insurance and ceilings were for. It just says it's an outer insurance and I wonder what insurance that was.
Which item was that, under, number one, number two?
Yeah, it's check number one, six two nine nine, and thirty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars.
It's a premium payment, it's going to be a parent payment for student insurance. Any other questions on one through, one, three, and four? Ms. Burst will be called to roll, please.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Bakker.
Aye.
Mr. Stokes.
Aye.
Mr. Bowles.
Aye.
And I.
All right, we have item number two. Can I have a motion on the rejection bids, please? Second. Ms. Donches, you had some questions or statements?
Yes, I just have a question and I know that the administration is familiar with asking for having, wanting to see a plan. When I first saw in the press, the invitation for the bids to go out, I called to see the plans because I wondered, and I'm still wondering which is why I picked this up, at what point does the board see the plans? Doesn't the board approve the plan before it goes out to bid? And why I ask is because, well, let's just say, just something people say about the college. We kind of look at the college, we're building, so many people say that they go over the top or above the top, and I just had a concern, like, what if we were making old school sheds? Nothing, but I'm just saying, at what point does the board look at the plans before they, it doesn't make sense that they would see them before they go out to bid. And so when I saw the invitation to bid, I was curious about what the plan looked like. And then I knew I had to go and buy it, I wanted to see it, I know I didn't do that. But in a way, like, why am I being asked to reject a bid that I didn't see?
Well, first of all, let's have the solicitor, I think there's different, I've not heard it, just from a legal question. The legal question is confidentiality of the materials. They're, they can be inspected, they can't be made copies of because they're actually not owned by the district. I believe there's a right to know law requests in, if you're very familiar with that request, it will be dealt with. So it can be reviewed by someone. I think that's the, that's the issue. But making copies is a different thing than viewing it.
Okay, but then, just in, just so I can learn about the process, let's just say we were building a school, does the board get to see the building plans for the school before it comes fit and why does that differ?
It depends on the size of the project. There are certain requirements for the board to approve certain construction projects that fall under the PlanCon. And so typically, we'll be looking at plans for the large construction projects, but things that go out for general bid and are under a certain amount are generally not reviewed by the board in advance, they are taken as part of the budget discussion. And if they're put in so much for maintenance or for the capital reserve plan, which we do approve, for instance, they might say, replace roof on Moore County Middle School. I'm not saying we're doing that, but I'm saying that that could be the only entry in there. We never see a plan or a series of specifications for those before we approve, approving the capital reserve plan or approve the bids, the plan, the bids that will come back and bidders on that. We only look at large construction projects where we're required to by law.
So what would happen if the sheds, just say that they were all, you have a glass wall for the school's ceiling? It would come to us outside of rejection, it would come to the approval, and then we would see it there that people had spent time bidding on something that was not, or wasn't communicative of the judge?
Again, if there's money in the budget, the administration can authorize the request for bids on certain projects that don't involve certain implications of, versus student safety or don't impinge on the PlanCon process. Those are defined in law as to what those projects have to be. But for instance, sheds would be bid out by the maintenance department. As if it was in the budget for them to do that, they have to have some authorization for money. And those bids and specifications go out to the contractors, they have to be maintained confidential while they're out to the contractors because of the fitting process, which is also regulated by state law. And then at the time when the final bids have been received, the board's role is to review the final numbers and decide whether they appear to be reasonable. And if they're reasonable, then we generally go with what's been recommended by the administration and it's the reasonableness factor we get, not looking at the individual specifications.
And last, here's Mr. Blancy, you can jump in. I can recall, give an example, not as much this year, but here before, we did extensive oil work, okay? And we laid out enough, we came back and reported that it's well underway. And after examination of those orders, we didn't have to do those extensive orders we thought. The other thing we put out for bid in that, this summer before, was extensive proof work. We do work engaged and we can recall, there are times when we engage in a genuine consulting service to help us prepare with those bids. And I think when we come back and we recommend that, or accept a bid, that that's something that would be, we think, a reasonable cost. There are several times since I've been so committed, without right, rejected a bid. And I think when we came to find, next to the last pitch, Will Wayne, we rejected those bids and went back and held that construction for three months. And also, when I first came to the small district board, was contemplating building a baseball, softball complex at West Colesville, and those bids came in a lot more than anticipated and we rejected those bids, I think twice, if I'm not mistaken. We went out and I certainly could not recommend those, but I think the board had given us a financial limit for those, for those kind of things. But I think it's down to a matter of intent of the board. And so I would be interested in getting direction from the board on scope of, is there a financial number that the board would want to see things at a time and get a little more? a little more? Well, we do give estimates in our, in our, in our, pardon me, in our presentation during the year, we did the board guidelines of what we think those projects are going to cost. And we have that for capital improvements. We update those every year, give you a spreadsheet, what anticipated cost on those projects. If they don't meet those projects, there's something wrong with funding this. Let's say the scope of the work can't be done in the time we fashion, then we would recommend rejecting those bids.
And in this case, like, for just the shed part of it, is that something that maybe the LCTI or the students, like, that make the playhouse, could they be considered to do something like that? And how many?
It depends. I have to defer Mr. Glancy, what he's looking for in terms of complexity of the work. Remember one thing about that project, that was kind of a mini project, but we did go through it and filed all the necessary approvals on the borough management.
It really would have to be included in the work though, and type of work through there are force obligations of what we're allowed to do as opposed to giving out the contract. So you have to be careful. The O-Tech goes ahead and builds a house, there's a process that they have to go through to make sure that it's within state limits.
There are also contractual limits. If you go out and bid for a service, it's different than if you attempt to have somebody in-house, either students or whatever, do it. And it gets very complicated as to what you can and cannot do with students on a campus.
I'll give you an example, you bring up a good point. And I can tell you one of the projects that Mr. Glancy and I met was principal, I should all take the school. But as is the case in East Penn, the board does not build or refurbish playgrounds. That's always been our custom, have PTA. So we have a school right now where's a PTA interested. They've engaged the architectural department, we have the university, to help with that. Now, and we've met, and we certainly know the, go through the approval process with the proper authorities. But for that case, what we may go back and at least bring in one of our engineers to take, look at the scope of the work, even though we're not primarily responsible for funding for that, we certainly want to make sure that the Nebraska project meets all the stated needs that we have. So we do do that on occasion. So we, and currently, we think that's going to happen this spring, where our PTA's working with, the guy's going to donate to services, which is great for PTA. So it's not something that we don't shut away from. We do embrace them under the right circumstances.
Any other questions, Ms. Donches?
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Just to clarify one issue, the board does not ever review plans in the sense of detailed specifications, blueprints, engineering diagrams, and all that sort of technical work. We never do. We hire professionals to do that. We hire engineers, architects, and general contractors and subcontractors to do that work for us. We will have presentations to us about the projects, about the kind, the nature of the project, maybe about the size as far as square footage, or the heights as far as number of stories. But we don't sit down and say, well, this ventilation duct is in the wrong place. That's certainly way beyond the scope of more school breakers. Even if all nine of us were practicing licensed civil engineers, that would be inappropriate for us if we get into that kind of detail. The second, second point on that is that there have been many times in the board's history where we've had a schedule plan. And the administration has come to us and said, we want to do a project, this is the kind of project, these are the goals, this is the purpose, this is the reasoning behind it, and this is what we think first pass is going to cost. And we say, okay, fine, hire an engineer or architect, do more detailed work. Then they'll come back to us and say, okay, we've done more detailed work, now here's what we think the estimate is going to be. And we decide if we want to proceed to bid or not. This is for larger projects. And if we decide to go to bid, we go to bid, we get the bids back, we have to get another chance to either say yes or no to the project. We can accept the bids, or we can reject them and not do the project, or we can reject them and rebid it. And we've done all three of those things over the course of my tenure on the board. We have rejected projects, we have rebid them, and we have accepted bids. Whether they come in above or below the estimates, we've had sometimes superior decisions about that, discussions about it. But never once have we brought in a chief of blueprints and started going through the page by page.
I will just point out before I recommend, Ms. Donches, that this motion is for rejection of bids, is not for acceptance of bids. Ms. Donches?
So just, do we have professional engineers?
We have a contract with a firm of professional engineers that we can call on at certain rates. So we have someone that be designated as district engineer for those purposes. And we also have, we have four major construction projects, architect, and they're also available under those same contract conditions. I would also point out that if, I am a licensed professional engineer, and I don't want my liability increased by making any decisions on an engineering basis on a plan that I have opted in the design phase for a hundred percent of the time. I'm not just like.
Like that, that every project is slightly different. Professional services require for assistance will be dependent upon the action of, like an architect, roofing work copies, window replacements, architect, like we had for when we went to build the track, so much very important, it's perfectly fine without getting necessarily.
Any other comments? We'll now vote on item number two, rejection of bids. An aye vote rejects the bid.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller. Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Stone.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We did not, as the agenda has indicated, we did not have an executive session tonight. So seven thirty PM board meeting is the only meeting we've had tonight. Monday, September third is Labor Day, all schools and offices are closed. And the next board meeting is on Monday, September tenth, seven thirty PM here in the boardroom. And I have a motion for this, is there any new business coming forward for tonight? Ms. Donches?
I noticed that one of the recommendations was more assistant principal at the high school.
That's correct.
Yes. So I went to make a motion to not replace assistant principal at May High School, which would be a big deal, and to consolidate position of the other more assistant principals.
Second. Motion of that serious nature should have been given to the board before this meeting, Ms. Donches, so that all members would have had an equal time to consider it. I would entertain a motion to table that. Motion. Well, aye, we'll discuss it.
I.
Ms. Fuller?
I think with a high school of, what, about twenty-seven hundred students?
In the neighborhood.
I think we, every assistant principal, if we assisted.
Everybody mind the board, we reduced the administrative staff by one assistant principal two years ago.
And I, I will make the statement after, Ms. Donches, go ahead, Ms. Donches.
I just think with, well, as one person said to me, what about the streets in the A number of people asked me, you know, what do all those, why do you have so many assistant principals? One for each class. And the administration, that there are a lot of administrators, I'm just saying what I heard, a lot of administration, talk to every own administration. And so I feel just like any business, when someone they keep a position, that you need to evaluate and see if you can consolidate those positions. And that would only be five percent more work to support people. And I think if we don't, if we have, if we're, we need to, we need to start cutting spending. And I think that this is the place to start.
Ms. Donches? I don't, I don't know where to begin on this one, because this is classic micromanagement by the board. We hire a superintendent to run this district. And again, if you disagree with his policies on running the district and how he's managed the district, you should make that known both to the superintendent and to the board. The board, in those classes that the PSBA gave you, haven't, I know full well they mentioned that boards do not get into individual policy decisions. In fact, that's why many of the anti-nepotism laws are around, or regulations, and in this case, in this district, a policy to prevent individual boards from making policy personnel decisions of that nature. And as I indicated also, a decision of that kind of magnitude is something that you owe a duty to the other members of this board to float out. You certainly have the opportunity as soon as you receive your packet, and that gives each member several days to do their own research on such an issue. And it's just basically damn unfair to try to spring surprise after surprise after surprise on these motions when you haven't given your fellow board members, given the courtesy of putting that idea out for the board meeting so they can do their homework on it. That is entrapment of the worst sort. It's political entrapment. It's attempting to make a statement without having the intestinal fortitude to stand up and make your thing known so that the objections can be raised by other people after reasoned examination of your proposal. That's what it is. Plain and simple. And so I don't appreciate that kind of motion for two reasons, both I've just stated. One, unfair notice to the board to discuss a highly sensitive personnel issue and a issue of confidence in our superintendent who is the administrative officer of this district. And two, that it is micromanagement of the worst sort, the worst sort, trying to make personnel decisions at the board level. As I said, we hire a superintendent. Why someone would think that they could do a better job than the superintendent, I don't know. The superintendent has cut administrative positions over several years, over a quarter of a million dollars worth of administrative positions. Our current ratio of administrative cost in this district is on the order of five percent. And it was one of the lowest districts percentage-wise that I know of in every study of administrative cost in the state of Pennsylvania. We're one of the top ten percent in having low administration costs. So to try to make a position that we have not cut enough, we don't know how much we need to cut, and we need to consolidate positions based on nothing more than we're going to save money, with no discussion of what the impact of the things are, is disreputable in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. Next, Mr. Earnshaw.
There are a couple of things. First of all, Ms. Donches, you said this would only add five percent to the workload that everyone else. Five percent is one-twentieth. That would insinuate that we have twenty assistant principals by eliminating one. It gets divided out. I believe we have five assistant principals down the floor now, right? So if you had five, now we're at four. So that would be a twenty percent workload increase on each one of the assistant principals if that were to be taken. My suspicion is that they're not sitting around for a couple of hours and they, well, I guess that would work, twenty percent would work out to about one and a half to two hours per day, there's nothing to do. So the idea that, well, let's just not hire, now, we can certainly make a recommendation to the superintendent that he evaluate whether we need to replace that assistant principal, whether we need to replace that position in time. But as Dr. Seidberger has said over and over again, whenever someone leaves, they do an analysis to decide whether that person should be backfilled, or whether we should backfill that, that headcount in a different part of the organization, or whether we should eliminate it. We have done that over and over and over again. I have the absolute confidence in our superintendent that he will go through that thought process and that he will justify any kind of personnel actions that he takes. And that for us to just make motions completely out of left field, to use a baseball metaphor, is inappropriate for a board member. It's unprofessional, and it's extremely discourteous to everyone who sits around this table. Thank you.
Dr. Seidberger?
I'd like to correct your mistake. We do have five on working with four, because we work with four also. So we do have five positions for a four assistant principal. I apologize.
Mr. Foltz?
Oh, Mr. Ballard, I'm the words of Ronald Reagan. There you go again. On the one hand, you'll brow me, Ms. Donches, or myself, for not proposing cuts and spending one of his budget time, not providing specific cuts now for a new cut. And now that we've proposed one, you call it micromanaging. I haven't given the slightest critical in this position. I don't agree with the PSBA's take on school directors shouldn't count the meatballs as they put it. In fact, I've been pretty insistent on opposing that position. I, I happen to know my principal that's seven, I think that she did a wonderful job, she was there when I was in high school. And I think that while it might be difficult, it will be difficult to replace her, I think that when we're looking at economic times as we are, and as they're so dire, as you yourself said, Dr. Seidberger, that we may only be looking at an eight thousand dollar balance at the end of the year, having to do the budgetary reserve, we have to make cuts that are going to be a little bit. One assistant principal for grade at the high school, to me, that seems the common sense to dictate that it's work. It might be difficult to support. And please, Mr. Earnshaw, she meant one-fifth of the increase. We, not everybody can be so lit and well spoken as you, Mr. Ballard. She's nervous. Unlike me, she has not been studying politics for all her adult life and is here to serve the public as she sees best. Thank you.
Any other comments? Unappearing, we will vote on Ms. Donches' motion, and I vote with Mr. Pollock. How are you going to get in here?
Well, for this discussion, again, I think I'm going to have to stay on this one because we can talk. I'm not sure that what would happen, what would happen if you were able to, if it's not enough information, we really need to.
Ms. Ursula, you vote, have Mr. Bacher?
I would just like to comment, the rationale proposed for this was, seemed to be, by your statement, that someone asked me, and I didn't know what these people did, and so you're proposing eliminating position. It seems to me that this is a legitimate request, you would try to find out what people did, and if there was ability, how responsibilities would be shifted before you bring it up and make a proposal. I also think something serious like this should be discussed, should have been giving people a heads up that this is coming. The administration could probably, I think they know what's needed, but I think they could probably provide more background if they had more of a heads up than the last five minutes of meeting that you're proposing.
Ms. Donches?
I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm waiting for your time.
You said at the start that people ask you, what do these people do, and you didn't know.
Oh, no, I didn't. I'm hoping to get the time discussion.
So, I mean, are you, I guess I should be correct.
Does anyone wants to say anything more? I don't see it to end up here. Ms. Ursula, you call the board please.
Mr. Stone.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Eliminating assistant principal.
Aye. Mr. Polacano.
State.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Ballard.
Nay. Are there any other new businesses to come before the board? Unappearing, Mr. Foltz.
I just, there was a statement that I wanted to make. Mr. Earnshaw sort of brought this up earlier inadvertently, but I was going to say this at this point, maybe regardless. I've seen in the public domain, most recently on the patchwork, accusations that I take my marching orders from Mr. Roderick Slouzer. Occasionally, there have been reports that I'm simply a Republican Party hack. And Mr. Earnshaw, you seem to question whether or not what I'm doing is out of conviction, or whether it's because I'm interested in political future. I take my orders from no one. I would take a suggestion from anyone. Mr. Slouzer has approached me in his opinion before, and we have not always agreed. I have not always voted the way he perhaps would like to. Just as I get suggestions from my neighbors on a regular basis, I take suggestions and vote and listen to them. But my ideas are my own. The reason that I'm on this board is, as you know, Mr. Earnshaw, Ms. Fuller, I've been attending these meetings since I was 16 years old, a student in high school. The reason that I'm involved in politics and public services is because I see so much that's personal. I feel, and I've seen it in the looks that certain members of the board give the audience in certain states. And the comments made by certain people on staff after the meetings are over, that they get genuinely annoyed when the public or taxpayers expresses their consternation with the way the board has handled this business. I base my votes on the common sense and on an ideological conviction and support for less government, lower taxes, and limited spending. I cast my votes in the board's favor. So I just wanted to put that statement out there in public domain, because the last couple of meetings, I've gotten very commotion. I'm the one that's always attacked, attacked for being, quote, against the children, against the public. I'm not. I try to look out for the children and voice the views of the parents when they have children. I try to be a representative of the public and get a picture of my intentions.
Make your very personal statement, Ms. Foltz. Any others? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn.